Meeting number one, welcome to the city council study session for May 29, 2024. It's 6:00 PM in the council chambers at 111 East Maple. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you to see if you have any open remarks or if we just go on to community development.
Ready to launch into it, sir.
Launch into it, all right. This is almost like a public hearing.
No new information to report.
Well done.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Tom Skanel. I'm the Community Development Director and I am happy to give you the Community Development Department's 2024-25 budget. First off, we do many things in the Community Development Department from building inspections, development services, historic preservation, neighborhood services. This is our code enforcement, regulated industries. This is the group that handles the business licensing, liquor licensing, as well as transportation. So that is the city's transit system, as well as administer the CDBG and home program funds that we receive from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The mission of the Community Development Department is to enhance the quality of life by encouraging public involvement in the planning and creation of quality places in which to live, work, and play. This budget has no proposed significant operational changes in our department. Personnel, we have slightly over 38 FTEs within the department and those are across all of the different functions that I mentioned in the first slide. How we tie into the strategic plan, the growth. We seek to attract and retain quality employers and quality development. And some of our customer service, help the customer in getting the permits, the licenses, that sort of thing. And then quality, which is addressing blight, whether that's tall grass weeds, trash, or unsafe or dangerous buildings. Some of our major accomplishments for the last year for our Neighborhood Services Division is we completed the Pitcher Neighborhood Improvement Initiative. This is a neighborhood that is located in the southwest part of the Independence. We also did proactive code enforcement on used car lots. City Council recently adopted the UDO amendment, making changes to the requirements for used car lots. And we continue to coordinate numerous large abatement cleanups. These would be large things that have accumulated on properties, whether they are rusted out, abandoned vehicles, RVs, equipment, those types of things. Here's a couple pictures showing before and after. On the left, we have what it looked like before and on the right, we have what it looked like after our code enforcement officers went through there. This is another picture here showing some trash, some mattresses out in front of the house. And then we have the after picture. Some of the major accomplishments with our Development Services Division, several UDO amendments that address adult businesses, vehicle sales, car washes, donation bins, short-term loans, as well as multifamily uses. The council had considered those and approved all of those this past year. Staff has also continued to work with Cargo Largo, the North Point, in developing out the East Gate project, Newtown at Harmony, as well as numerous other commercial residential projects that have come before, city staff, planning commission, and city council. Building inspections, this is the group that coordinates the review of all construction activity within the city. As part of that, they coordinated the review of over $97 million of investment in the community over the last year, continued to utilize ARPA funds to demolish dangerous buildings, and continued the enforcement of the vacant structure registry program where several of those vacant structures were made viable again. That means that the property owner went in there, fixed them up, and got them ready to be livable again. Here's a couple pictures showing the accomplishments. The picture on the left is a residential house fire. Unfortunately, the house was not able to be saved and the city had to step in and demolish that structure. And that is shown on the picture on the right. Our Regulated Industries Group, this group increased enforcement on unlicensed landlords. We also increased enforcement on businesses, those that did not renew their business license in time. Staff worked with those businesses to get them into compliance with our business licensing regulations and then coordinated enforcement on used car lots after the UDO change was approved. Our budget, as far as the impact to the general funds, a little over $6.2 million. The total budget for the Community Development Department is $10.1 million. So about $4 million come from grants. Those grants come from FTA to assist with the costs associated with our transit system from the state of Missouri that also help with transit costs. CDBG and home, those are dollars that we get from HUD and we administer those programs. It shows Home ARP. That is a program that came from HUD and that is one-time funds that we will be administering with CSL and Mother's Refuge to assist those who were impacted by COVID. Revenues, revenues that we collect are tied to the overall economy and we have projected those to stay steady for the next fiscal year. The North Point project, as that continues to develop out, we should see large, we should see increases in building permit, planning and zoning fees and business license fees as those come forward. On a future city council agenda, I think it's for June 3, we do have some increases for revenues that will be part of the schedule of fees. Those increases are some slight increases to building permits, certain types of business licenses and those. And like I said, that item will be coming forward to the city council in June. A little bit on the transit update, the cost of transit continues to go up. We have seen that over the last several years. We are working closely with KC ATA. They have put out a RFP to help us select the next transit operator. And the latest update is the RFP is going to close on June 3. They originally had it scheduled for May 30, but June 3, given the holiday. The vision that we see for the transit system is one that utilizes the fixed routes. Those are the routes going up and down certain streets, but then also utilizing IRIS, which is a mobility service, as well as the complimentary ADA and non-ADA public transit system and do all of that within our budgeted amounts. We had one budget request. Unfortunately, this was not filled. We were seeking $221,000. This was for the demolition of dangerous buildings as our ARPA funds are set to run out at the end of this calendar year. So as that was not approved, what our current budget allows us to demolish is anywhere from 10 to 12 residential structures. Unfortunately, the funds will not be there to demolish any commercial structures at this time. On the flip side, we see the need to demolish 35 residential structures within the next year and probably four to five commercial structures. Just would like to point out that whenever we demolish a structure or complete a property maintenance abatement, liens are placed on the property that helps to recoup some of those costs. So the hypothetical, what if, you know, what if we had to make a cut to our budget? Again, going back to the budget slide, we are $6.2 million department to the general fund. So that equates to $625,000 reduction. Essentially, what we would do is reduce our abatements by 50%. As part of that, we would eliminate two code enforcement officers. That's the salary, the benefits, computer, truck, equipment, all of that stuff. Reduce enforcement on the rental-ready program, that would be one staff person. Eliminate the enforcement on the vacant structures, that'd be one staff person. Reduce building inspection frontline staff, so those are the staff that are assisting the customers, helping them get through the permit process, that would be two staff. And then lastly, reduce one construction inspector by one. All of those would have tremendous impact to what we do. You will notice that none of the cuts affect transit. We see transit as a vital lifeline for those that use it. Making cuts there would really impact those. So all of these cuts would impact other areas within the department and it's pretty substantial. So I'm available for any questions?
Any questions? Please proceed.
I know that when we go in and demolish buildings, those dollars go on the tax lien. How much of that do we actually ever get repaid?
We could do an analysis of that and the number that I had, and it's several years old. It was around 10%. And the reason for that on the dangerous building side is if the property owner is not going to demolish that building, the city steps in and demolishes it, most likely that that property is going to go into the hands of land trust. So then it's going through that process and then ultimately we may get those funds back several years on down the road when the future buyer acquires that from land trust and pays off that lien.
So there's no time value of money? They just pay the flat fee? If it costs you $25,000 to demolish it, they're required 10 years later to pay you $25,000? There's no inflationary aspect?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
We do add in the administrative time with working the dangerous building case, following up on the inspections and that sort of thing. So all of that is added into that as well, but there's no inflation adjustment.
And I know you'll probably talk to us more about IRIS. So just things to, I would love to hear about. Northland instituted it, what's their experience been like with that? Do you have to have a cell phone in order to engage with IRIS or is there a landline option? And will there be a reduction of our fixed route to pay for the IRIS side? So just the trade-offs there.
Sure, so IRIS was, they first had the test pilot in Casey Mo a little over a year ago, maybe closer to two years now. They had great success. They rolled it out to the Northland and other parts of the metro. And what they've seen since they've rolled it out is that ridership has really, really grown. It is a smartphone-based reservation system or on-demand mobility system. I do believe that one can make the reservation via a landline phone. Again, those are things that they allow cities to set up. So there's great flexibility in how IRIS gets set up. And as we move forward, we will, you know, balance the cost of what each one of those different options, how we desire to set this up, weigh that against the costs or the funds that we have available. To answer the last question, the RFP that did go out, it does show a reduction in the number of routes. Our thinking, along with the planners at KC ATA, had recommended this and to utilize IRIS to replace those two routes that were underperforming.
And are we envisioning IRIS will be point-to-point or it will be point-to-fixed route?
What I had talked to them when I first met with them is that IRIS is curb-to-curb.
Okay.
But it can also go curb to Transit Point. And depending on how the system is set up, there's different costs associated with that. Again, it all gets back to how the city desires to set this up.
I'm sure I'll have more questions, but this is a budget hearing and so I hope, thank you.
Anyone else have further questions?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Ridge is taking a couple of my questions already, so that's good. I'm going to make my same disclaimer I said last night. Anything that I say that might be, this goes for all of you all. Anything that I say that might be perceived as negative isn't really intended that way. It's just, I'm trying to understand. So that's, I just, I'll make that disclaimer in case something comes across wrong. So in looking at funding, I'm noticing that the grant fund went down by, you know, $800,000 roughly and the home grant went up by a million and a half roughly. Can you say a little more about that?
Yeah, so the, in fact, I'll go back to the slide. Oops. So the home ARP, those are, those were one-time funds that the city received from HUD. As part of receiving those funds, the city had to put together a home ARP allocation plan, basically telling HUD and the citizens how we intend to spend those funds. We did that, that was an exercise that we did in 2023. City Council approved that. And so those home ARP funds, those are one-time funds that the city needs to spend by 2030. And so as part of our allocation plan, we specified that we were going to partner with partner agencies to administer those funds for the city. And the city went through that RFP exercise and selected CSL and Mother's Refuge to allocate or to get those funds to assist the population that need those with financial assistance as well as wraparound services. So again, so to answer your question, those are one-time funds that are appearing in the FY '24, '25 budget, but those will be spent over the next couple of years.
I see, okay. And the grants fund went down by about substantially?
Yes, so with the onset of COVID, there was a lot of CARES money that flew, that was distributed to regions to assist with transit. And so all of the grant funds that are in those lines from '22, '23, and '23, '24, that accounts for those CARES funds that the city received. We have spent all of those funds and so we have no more to carry forward.
Gotcha, okay, all right. And then in, under Regulated Industries, talked a little bit about, well, it talks in here about one of the accomplishments being implementing the utilities and rental-ready program to locate unlicensed landlords. Is that the internal one? I mean, is that done internally or is that the external contract that we?
This is through the contractor that has found over 5,000 rental properties and has submitted those lists to the city so that the city can follow up with that.
And so my question is, you know, we, I mean, identifying 5,000 is pretty substantial and I know that that's resulted in more income. Can we do anything similar in your mind to be more proactive in finding unlicensed businesses? I don't know if we can, I'm just thinking out loud.
So to find unlicensed businesses, we brought forward an amendment to Chapter 5, which is the Business License Code, which talks about any business before they are able to get utilities, they have to have a valid business license. And anecdotally, that has helped. I believe it was only a few months ago that the city council passed that.
Right.
But anecdotally, that helps, that gives us that extra tool to help that as well as when other departments are out doing their things, whether it's the fire department going out and doing their company inspections and they find unlicensed businesses, they pass that information along to us too, so.
Gotcha, okay. I thought I had one more, but let me rework here. No, I guess that's it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have further questions? Please proceed.
This maybe isn't a true budget question, but I get a lot of emails about code violations and you and I have talked before about the shift in your department, the proactive. Can you just talk about like the percentages? Like I know it used to be you got most of those from complaints and now most of the work you do is proactive.
Correct, yeah. So a number of years ago, our proactive code enforcement cases, so those are our cases where staff went out and identified those. Those were in the low teens and we have grown that over the years to, it fluctuates anywhere from 40 to 50%. So that's a dramatic shift in how we do business. And from my opinion, it is helping. When, I'd mentioned about that Pitcher Neighborhood Initiative. One anecdotal piece of information that we got from that is neighbors started to notice that they knew the city was coming around and so neighbors started to mow their grass, they started to pick up trash. And so when we did that initiative, our success rate, and I'll call it that, was not very good, meaning that we did not start a lot of cases. So that's a good thing from my, in my opinion. And that's that shift and it really comes from, we have a really strong manager over code enforcement and so she deserves all the credit. She comes up with these great ideas and I go, go.
Thanks.
Please proceed.
If people are tuning in tonight and didn't tune in last night, I just want to make that disclaimer that the 10% reduction was an exercise in thinking ahead should we be in budgetary challenges. And I don't want anybody to go home and think that that is the plan.
That is correct.
Just a reminder, thank you.
Great point, thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
So forgive me, I'm trying to get familiar with this. On the administration page and the Neighborhood Services page, you have equipment in every year, but not for '24, '25? Is it somewhere else or there's just no number there?
So it goes back to how they track computer purchases. And so that is, with that shift, the computer purchases used to come out of equipment, but more recently they've changed that to put computer purchases under operating supplies. So that is the reason for that change.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, that brings up emergency management, city manager's office. Pardon me.
What page in the big budget?
Starts on page 201.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sam Morris. I am the chief of emergency operations here for the city. This evening, we're going to take a 30,000-foot view through the city manager's budget as well as the communications budget and then take a deep dive into emergency preparedness. So stop me at any point that you guys have questions, otherwise I'll take them at the end. So we'll start with the city manager's office. As you can see, both the '23, '24 adopted as well as the '24, '25 proposed is still staying at the 6.75 for our staff. The actuals for '22, '23 are there, adopted, as well as our '24, '25 proposed is $974,063, not a tremendous change. For communications, again, we were at 3.4 individuals and we have reduced that group to two. This budget, I'm sorry, the budget here, adopted budget, estimated and proposed, will give you the example of that, so going from the 522,000 down to the 299,000. That's with the reduction of your head counts. Okay, so those are our 30,000-foot views of both of those. Happy to take questions if you guys have any, otherwise we will keep going with emergency preparedness.
Any questions? Seeing none, please proceed.
Yes, sir. So what is emergency preparedness? We are individuals that stay up very, very late at night. We do not sleep and we think about all the bad things that could possibly go wrong within the city of Independence and how we're going to protect the citizens and get back to our normalcy, our day-to-day life. We have to think about a lot of different things, whether it's weather-related, fire-related, whether it happens to be cyber attacks, it's all included in emergency preparedness. So how are we connected to the strategic plan? Well, in some way, shape, or form, emergency preparedness is connected to every single one of these, whether that be through HOA planning, whether that be through training, the connections that we make within the community. We update our technology systems, so we're constantly working with tech services to determine what operations, you guys had lots of questions about cyber attacks and stuff last night. So that's something emergency preparedness takes very seriously and we work with our tech services to ensure that we have what we need and the capabilities. We share with them training, different grants that allow for this, so we work hand-in-hand with them very well. We work with HOAs, again, to promote and maintain safe plans in the event of a disaster. I, you know, I can't harp enough on two different things. One is ensuring that, you know, we're having these conversations with our families. What are we going to do if we lose power? What are we going to do if we have a major disaster, a tornado that comes through? Not the best conversation to have at the dinner table, but those unfortunately are conversations that we need to have, because our families need to know exactly what we're going to do and what those plans are when something like that were to hit. And as well, the last thing, the high-performance organization. I think our volunteers and our staff are probably tired of me hearing this, but I want Independence to be the model. I want other municipalities to come to Independence. They rely on us, they look at us, what are they doing, what aren't they doing? How can we, you know, form our own emergency preparedness departments? And so that's kind of what I push down to the volunteers, as well as the employees. You know, we need to be very strategic in the decisions that we make, in what we're putting out, the training that we're putting on, the individuals that we're bringing in, the volunteers that we're honing in on their expertise, and we're bringing in individuals that are really going to make us the best of the best. So what has emergency preparedness done this year? We've been awarded over two hundred thousand dollars in grants. Part of that is from SEMA, which does cover some of our positions. They cover fifty percent of our salary and benefit for our employees, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a second. We've fully implemented our remote, both activated and automated outdoor warning sirens. So without getting too in-depth with this, what we've done is we've partnered with the National Weather Service, and so if you have signed up for alerts, and if you haven't, you need to, you can go to our website, you can go to departments under emergency preparedness, sign up for the RAVE system. You can go in, you can tell them, I don't want to know about watches, I only want to know about the warnings. You can go in and say, I only want email, I only want text, I want all of the above. So if you haven't done that, please, please, please go and do that. But what this program, what this system does is it allows the National Weather Service to activate this, they give us a thirty-second warning that, hey, we're getting ready to activate a tornado warning, and if it is within the polygon that we have created with our, oh, excuse me, within our own system, it will activate our sirens automatically. We do have a fallback if the National Weather Service is unable to do so. We can activate this through our cell phones. I've already told Mr. Walker he cannot have it on his cellphone. As well as, we also have individuals, every single time there is a thunderstorm warning, we do have volunteers and/or staff within our EOC, which is our Emergency Operations Center over at Fire Station One. We do have individuals within the station when there are warnings that could also activate it, so we kind of have a three-phased approach there, should something happen and individuals need to be notified. We have applied for additional COVID-nineteen assistant grant funding. There are still a lot of grants out there for the ability to be able to recoup some of the expenses that municipalities experienced for COVID-nineteen. So we are actively working on a multimillion-dollar grant right now. It has been submitted, we have not heard anything, so it is, it's still pending. We don't just focus on emergency preparedness when it comes to those type of things, we are outward-looking at all of the departments as a whole. We've participated, we've run, we have implemented, we have evaluated several different exercises, both city, state, and region throughout this year. We've completed the COOP plan for each facility, and the COOP plan is the continuity of operations. So what are we going to do if we have a fire? What are we going to do if we have a tornado? What are we going to do if we have that cyber attack that we were talking about last night? This gives us the ability to go to one place that shows exactly who are we supposed to call, who are we supposed to report back to, where are those resources, what vendors do we have available that we can use, what are those phone numbers, what's our threshold for those? So it truly is a one-stop-shop, should we not be able to get to our computers or something like that. And then finally, we do have a wonderful partnership with the Medical Reserve Corps of Kansas City. We've been a stakeholder in several of their projects. Director Christina Heinand last night spoke briefly on the shared individual with both health and emergency preparedness, as they kind of go back and forth with the Medical Reserve Corps, so that's a great program that we've created with them. So with all of that, I would hope that you guys would think that we have a small army behind us that are doing all of that, but unfortunately, we've got two, well, fortunately, we have two and a half individuals that run and are able to accomplish all of that. So huge kudos to them with the help of our volunteers. I did, for twenty-four, twenty-five, I did ask for one additional person, and I will get into more detail about what that looks like and what we would expect that individual to do. Last night, there were a couple of questions from Councilmember McCandless in reference to grants and how they fluctuate. They're not always something that are guaranteed by any stretch of the imagination. While I don't foresee FEMA or SEMA ever going away, both fed and state, I have asked that as long as emergency management, emergency preparedness is under the city manager's office, we will always budget for the full amount of salaries in hopes that we get that grant, but at least we are covered. So that's why you kind of see that fluctuation in the, you know, adopted budget being three hundred and forty-five thousand, but yet the expenditures are going to be well under that, that's because of that, those grants that were awarded. And so again, the three hundred and forty-nine thousand of the proposed budget, we did receive word we will not be spending the full three forty-nine, but again, we just want to be on the safe side, we want to make sure that we're allocating the correct funds that we need to, should something change or we not receive that. So back to the position that I had asked for. The Grant and Community Outreach Coordinator is what this individual would do. The seventy thousand that you see there on the screen is both salary and benefit, so it includes that. They would be responsible for maintaining, recruiting, certifying, training, recording, all of our volunteers. It would take quite a bit of their time to be able to do all of that. They also would be responsible for the grants, so not only finding those grants, but applying for those grants, monitoring the grants, being sure that we're constantly having, you know, analytical reports run for us to determine where we're at with those, what are we spending them on, you know, those type of things. Another item that this individual would be responsible for are the special event permit processing. We're getting a lot of those, they're becoming more frequent, and we really need a hub for an individual that can run it and then be able to work with each of the departments. This, we've got a phenomenal program within City Works that allows us to be able to send out a mass notification to departments that are affected by the permit request itself, whether that's municipal services through the barriers, whether that's the police department, because we need off-duty officers. So having a hub for that would be vital to what we're doing, and that would be something that this individual, this coordinator, would do, as well as, again, supporting other departments with submissions for grants. There's a two-option approach here. This could potentially be fifty percent funded, like our other positions through our state emergency management association, SEMA. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring your attention is there's only one tax that emergency preparedness falls under within the city, and that is the marijuana sales tax. And so I also would encourage this individual to be paid fifty percent out of that particular tax. The other item that we need to look at, and our second budget request, is an increase in our siren maintenance. We do have a contract with Blue Valley, who services and repairs, maintains our sirens. We do our monthly testing. If there's any issues with it, they are phenomenal at being able to come out. We make one phone call, and they're out probably within the hour to be able to review and see what's going on, figure out what happened. And so it's pretty pricey when you're calling them out potentially once a month, should something go wrong each and every time. Knock on wood, that hasn't been the case, but we certainly want to make sure that we are maintaining our sirens and doing the necessary repairs that we want to. And I'll kind of touch on that a little bit here in a few minutes. I did present two different volunteer program initiatives that I'd like to see brought forward. I sat down with the volunteers, the leader volunteers within the EOC, and I asked them, if you could plant a money tree, and you could get anything, what would it be? And Carol, one of our volunteers, immediately answered the question and said, all I want is to be able to bring back the volunteer initiative program. And I said, tell me more. And she said, it used to be years ago that based off of the number of hours of service with our volunteers, we would receive something small, whether it was a vest, whether it was a flashlight. A thirty-five-dollar ham radio was the absolute most expensive, and it, she said, there were so few people that actually got to it because of the hundreds of hours it took to actually get to it. So their one request was, please bring back the volunteer incentive program for us, because it really helped us recruit, but also maintain those vital volunteers. As well, we want to be able to do community outreach. We need to be able to print pamphlets, we need to be able to start go-bags for individuals, and as well, we need to be able to bring in certified trainers to not only train staff, but also train our volunteers to make sure that they're ready to go and they're prepared when they're called to the line. So in order to do that and have those individuals here, it's about five thousand dollars, and that gets us one training every quarter, so. The emergency equipment, I did ask for one computer this next year. It is one computer and one six-bay, which is basically six monitors based off of the software that we use. That's kind of what we are accustomed to. We do traditionally run about twelve to fifteen systems at the exact same time while we're in the EOC monitoring, and there are days where it feels like we are running off the computer that's there on the screen. So it can be very frustrating at times. So what does, as the exercise that the mayor requested, the ten percent decrease, what does that look like for emergency preparedness? The easy answer is head count. That's probably going to be the easiest, but that's not what I'm interested in. So mine is kind of a trickle-down effect. If you, if we had to decrease by ten percent, we'd be selling two vehicles, both our SUV and our truck, as well as returning one of our trucks without any fleet. We would have no ability to be able to haul any of the six trailers that we have, that each of them have a different purpose. So we would also not only have to sell those trailers, but we would also have to relinquish the emergency supplies that are within those trailers. And then again, we would also decrease our central garage funding for that. The other thing that is going to end up coming to fruition, should that happen, is we're going to have a much slower time, response time with the maintenance of our sirens. So it could be an internal policy of we wait until two or three of our sirens need to be serviced before we call them out to have them check it, which, of course, you know, there's the potential of needing to use them, and we don't have that ability. So a ten percent cut for this particular group would be devastating. All right, and I will just open it up to you all for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Everybody good? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next up is our police department.
All right. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Adam Despin, chief of police, and we will go through this year's twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget for the police department. Our overall structure, as many of you know, for our new council members, the police department is split into two bureaus. One is Operation Support, which is all things administrative and support services. The other are all of the sworn commissioned officers that you would typically see. That is our Field Operations Bureau, which encompasses patrol, investigations, and special operations. The mission of the police department is, as you would expect, to protect life, liberty, and property for all things in the city of Independence, lower crime and disorder, maintain a positive relationship with the community, and then develop a positive working environment inside of the police department. This last fiscal year, we eliminated a police records administrator and consolidated that with an open, with an already-filled captain's position, combining both records and detention into one unit. We filled all but one of our vacant command staff positions, and we added a fleet technician, a system admin one and two, an IA sergeant, and digital media officer's positions in conjunction with the Department of Justice grant and the Body, Worn Camera Program that we are just days away from being able to roll out. The connection with the action plan for us is a high-performance organization, just making sure that we continue structured in a way that is effective and efficient, both in the service that we provide to the community, as well as internally, the way we process requests, complaints, and other services. And then continuing to explore technological platforms that make us efficient, as well as a well-planned city, being able to consolidate some of the platforms that we currently use through either technological advancements or acquisitions, as we did with Axon this last year. And then, obviously, a charge to all of us in the city is to be good stewards continually of the public funds that are entrusted to us, making us a financially sustainable organization, so we will continue to do that. And then, probably goes without saying, a safe and welcoming community, an engaged community are at our core with the services, the outward services that we provide to the community on a daily basis. This fiscal year, you are well aware, we purchased the mobile command post, the two-vehicle system, one of which should be in this month, here in June, and then the second with the lead time, we're expecting sometime this next fiscal year, so we'll be able to roll those out and demo those for all of you when we take possession of those. And those will be critical to our responses to major events, as well as the large events with the World Cup, Santa Calagon, other things that we do annually here within the city. We already talked about Axon and what a significant investment that was, as well as the benefits that that will prove out for the police department over time. We are in the process of, again, rolling out the Body Camera Program. We have all the initial trainers complete, and we just began this week issuing those out to field officers, so the community will start to see those in the field. And then, once we have all of that, and kind of the bugs worked out, we'll actually hold community meetings throughout to kind of demonstrate their capabilities. And then, we took a huge step at, in long overdue for the police department as far as our personnel development, internally with creating from scratch a first-line supervisor course for all of our sergeants and first-line supervisors, and rolled that out across the department this year. So very proud of those folks in our training and Operations Support Bureau for being able to do that and get that done. So the numbers for us, you'll see this year, three twenty-seven goes up by four. Again, those are those positions in conjunction with the Body, Worn Camera Program that were counted for in the grant that we received, otherwise unchanged. And our total general fund budget, thirty-seven million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars, up from thirty-six point two from this year's estimated expenditures, detailing all of those different units and divisions of the police department. Our revenue that actually comes in as far as grants and those kinds of things are detailed through the different taxes. So we do have a little bit of revenue, but as previously mentioned, they fluctuate back and forth. Some of the notable ones are our highway safety grants that we get, those are all the traffic grants, DWI, occupant protection, all those that you'll see in there. But they do fluctuate, and we have to apply for those annually, just like most others. These are just different facilities and capital outlays for us, and then the PST is the Public Safety Sales Tax, and then the use tax that we have, showing the combined total budget for the police department in this year's proposed budget is forty-eight million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. I was ahead of myself by one slide. Here are the grants and the different revenue sources. So you have the Jack's County Drug Task Force, sale of police reports is pretty static. And then the STEP program is the educational program that replaced the DARE program inside of the schools, so that funds that. Safe Streets Initiative was not renewed for out-of-combat this year for youth court, so we actually picked up the overtime for the education piece within PD, so we'll still provide that very vital program with the help of Judge Watkins here for our youth court residents, which is a really important program for us to support. The school resource officers, obviously, that's subsidized by the Independent School District, and then we have the alarm charges, which is the third-party service for the false alarm charges that I know you all are well aware of and hear about often through Cry Wolf. And then our various contracts with Hawthorne, off-duty administrative fees and things like that are captured in that last twenty-five thousand dollar annual revenue. This next year's capital outlay totals one point six million dollars. Equipped vehicles totals one point one million. This was a shift you can see from the quantity that we're looking to purchase or acquire, so seventeen at seventy thousand apiece, MDTs that all need to be replaced, as the ones that are in our cars currently are end-of-life and actually no longer being manufactured. And then the mobile in-car radios, we do those all on a cycle. And then the mobile in-car radios, we do those all on a cycle to get those, goes kind of on a replacement cycle. And then our handheld portable radios and Star Chase, again, we're going to keep four of those. And I know we've talked about those recently, so that shows that replacement cost to continue to equip four of those. We've talked it nauseam about the Axon contract. And again, this year's only supplemental package, which was to come out of the Public Safety Sales Tax and or Use Tax combination is $1.2 million, and that's this year's piece of that 10-year agreement. So for our doomsday scenario, exercise, I almost hate to, after all the work we've done, and especially on the public record in the last month, I hate to even go down this road, but 10% for us is $3.7 million, almost $3.8 million out of the general fund. So that would eliminate the 38 vacancies that we have. So all of the things that we just are really on the precipice of trying to avoid, this would completely eradicate all of those and we would be right back there. The really scary part is if that isn't scary enough, to compound that would be the loss of 10 dispatchers. So that would be included in this reduction. And if you can, just to put that in perspective, as alarming, and I'm glad that your reactions are the same as mine, right now, that would put us in a 33% reduction of staffing, which is the crisis mode that our neighbor to the west, Kansas City Police Department, is currently experiencing and what prompted this regional dispatch center discussion. Some very scary things to note about that, just to put on your radar, is that is police-only. We do police, fire, and triage for AMR. So if you can imagine what that means as far as a reduction in service and significant impacts to our community, your response times go up significantly with the reduction of 38 sworn personnel out on the road. And then the reduction of the people actually taking the frontline calls, the first first responders, as we call them in that wonderful room. Your wait times, when you call 911, the frustrations that we hear, I am so proud that our average wait time from call to answer is usually sub-five seconds. That goes up to minutes, if you can think about that in some of our neighboring jurisdictions. So those are the kinds of very monumental and disastrous impacts that a 10% reduction to the Police Department's general fund budget would realize. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
And again, just to reiterate to anyone who is listening, this was an exercise, you know, in philosophy or philosophical, it was not anyone, there's no one here that's proposing that as a real situation right now.
Correct.
This was an exercise and I thank you for doing that. So anyone, any questions? Please proceed.
I saw that you had a reduction in your records unit, and I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so part of that is the position, the records administrator. So that was a reduction of one. And then we also combined, just from a FTE perspective, of shifts in what we could, what we were able to condense and kind of streamline what we had had before, we were able to reduce some of that. So some of those are vacancies that you'll see reflected in the vacancy savings factor as well, that are still there on the books. They're on our table in the organization, but thus far unfilled. So it's kind of a compounding piece of there. So we tried to streamline where we can, but ultimately, we have to be able to provide that 24/7 service.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any further questions?
I do.
Marway.
Chief, I'm looking at your estimated expenditures for this year of $54,900,000 compared to proposed budget of $48,500,000 total. I'm just looking at the bottom lines.
Sure.
Can you give me a little understanding of the difference between, you know, there's a $6 million difference roughly there? It looks to me like it's, well, I don't know, I'm not letting you answer what it is.
So initially, we had a lot of the services and the technological replacements that we had. We also have the salaries that are there that are realized as far as the personnel costs that are assumed in that one-year funding this year that we have the ARPA funds for this next fiscal year, but that will roll into two different years, so to speak. So we'll have to see what happens with that funding source. But that's really our only significant expenditure piece that, obviously, like most organizations, 85% to 90% are personnel costs. We are no different. So you have those costs along with the supplemental tax that will come from the Justice Center project and build out to those expenses as well. So that's the significant piece of that you'll see year over year. And some of that's reflective, like we talked about with the inter-fund charges with technology and those things that gets rolled over that were otherwise put under operating expenses from other expenses, just a different way in finances preference for accounting.
Thank you. I'm looking at the training area and expenditures in training were much lower this year than what they were budgeted, and I'm just wondering if you could speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so initially, so we have our training funds in two different categories, well, really three different categories. We have our post-training funds that come from, actually, post-funds from the state that are released through specifically for post-certified training. We then have local training that supplements that. A portion of that are from a very small portion of each of the ticket sales. I know we always get, you know, accused of being the, you know, just writing off our own revenue and all of that kind of stuff. It is, I don't know what the percentage is, I probably should. I think it's 1%, maybe, or something, maybe it's 5%, but it's very nominal that goes back to that specific training fund that we have from citations and court proceedings fines and things like that that come back to the city. And then we have our out-of-town training budget as well that sends for conferences, certification conferences, and other things. Within that budget, it just depends on, for our big thing is staffing. So really directly to answer your question, we just don't have the staffing available to go to fully expend the training, whether it be because we don't have the backfill from the vacancies that we've had. The other big one for this fiscal year, obviously, probably goes without saying, I was trying to avoid mentioning it, but we had an event back in February that kind of put us on the standstill for most of the year. So that, a lot of those things were canceled and we're still trying to heal from that and kind of really get back into the normal swing of things, so to speak. But really, those two factors for this year are kind of our biggest drivers. But staffing has been year over year, that's a big thing. We just, you know, whether it be backfilling staff so we can send staff out to go get trained or just inflationary costs, as they were, local training versus out-of-town training, we always try to look at those things. We have a committee, both sworn and civilian, that actually evaluate each and every training request from a department member that comes in.
Okay, next one I had was in special enforcement in that area. You know, I noticed there's 18 people. I'm wondering how many of those are actually traffic? Because I think I remember hearing that you're low on traffic. I don't know how low, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get a sense for that.
About 50%. So we, so all of special enforcement is traffic. So half of that is now crash investigation, formerly Accident Investigations Unit, same function, different name. The other, so seven of those are, so 11, 10 plus a sergeant are crash investigation. The other seven are six motors, formerly special enforcement, is, or I'm sorry, selective enforcement. Now motors are your motorcycle guys. So all 18 of those are traffic enforcement. The others, you have community services, and then tactical enforcement is your tactical operations folks, so your SWAT team guys.
Okay, so you're about half down on that, so.
Yeah, so we still have, we have about five vacancies halfway there in crash investigations. And then we have three vacancies in the motor unit. So they're each running about 50% of their frontline staff.
Gotcha, okay. All right, I think that's, those are my questions.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Chief, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks.
And that brings up our Finance Department presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So I am page 145 in your books. So my name is Megan Borth. I believe I've met everyone already, but I am the interim Finance Director. I've only been here a month, so you may ask me a question, I don't know, but I will get back to you if not. I just want to say I am very excited to be here. My team is amazing. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what they've been able to accomplish the past year. So yeah, let's get into it. So this is the Finance Department's organization chart. We are responsible for pretty much everything you would think when you think money and accounting, all things requisitions, purchasing, those sorts of things. We're also in charge of risk management, so that includes insurance, workers' comp, those sorts of things. If you see ERP, that pertains mostly to software. So our accounting software, that's the loose term for it. I will say that this department, I want to give them huge kudos. It is currently a team of nine, 10 with myself. You'll see, we'll talk sort of the personnel numbers here in a little bit, but with just the nine of them, there is over 137 years of city experience. And I think the greatest part of the Finance Department is that it's pretty split. So about half of them have been here over 20 years and the other half, you know, it's only been a year or two. So we have three individuals that are over 25 years with the city, and you have a really good balance right now of institutional knowledge, but then also fresh eyes and new ideas. And the team does an amazing job of trying to really collaborate those two things and not have, you know, a weird dichotomy going on of, you know, sticking to tradition, but also everyone trying to change everything. So I have came in, I think, at a really good time. They have embraced me and all my energy of wanting to kind of help and do anything that anyone has any ideas for as far as finance goes. So I want to give them huge shout-out. You'll kind of see everything they've been able to do, though. So our mission is to provide leadership and direction for the city's internal operations and responsibilities so that all assets of the city are protected while providing effective and efficient support. Basically, that's just fancy term for saying we handle all the money and try and help people find the best way to account for things or budget for things. My, one of my biggest goals is to start working with the departments really closely and help them with forecasting and projecting and really understanding their budgets, give them a little bit more ownership over it, so that hopefully at these meetings next year, I have a really good understanding of basically every line item, as well as they do, even just more so than I think they already do. So that's our biggest asset, I think, for the finance team, is that our staff is so willing to help the departments as much as they can. So we had some significant operational changes. You'll see when we start talking about personnel numbers, that there has been a little bit of reorganization going on. So we had some personnel that shifted, so like Melissa shifted to the city manager's office, because it makes sense that the budget analyst or manager would be under the city manager. In cities, it's both ways, where it's under finance or under the city manager's office. And I think here, it makes sense with how closely Melissa or anyone else would work with the city manager. But you'll also see that we're trying to sort of bring, we have a lot of financial personnel spread out throughout the city that are under the departments. And so before I came in, they sort of set the charge to start moving some of those positions back under finance to keep it more centralized. So if a department, you know, needs a question, it's a little bit more collaborative versus one person trying to just understand one small piece. So you will see all those changes here in a little bit. As Melissa has talked a lot about, we are switching to priority-based budgeting, and that has been fully utilized. So again, huge kudos to her. I have not seen that implemented in a city, and so I think it has made a really big impact on the budget this year here. And then we've also implemented eCivis, which is a software that helps with internal service charges. And that, we'll talk a little bit more about it as well. So connecting back to the strategic plan, again, pretty much our entire directive is to provide assistance to departments as much as we can. And so a lot of that goes back to our controls and our checks and balances. So it's us understanding the numbers so that we can help them make decisions and we can help guide them to whatever their mission is. So all of these really range back to them understanding their budgets and understanding what, like, the 10% that we, you know, that we were asked to run, you know, what that would mean. So it's really our job to kind of help them understand budget impact and how that impacts service levels and all the, all the different, you know, our different maintenance or labor costs as well. So it's the different tools that go into making both of these things, both being customer-focused and financially sustainable. Yes, and then we have our metrics here, which this is kind of how we judge whether or not we're meeting those goals. A lot of it has to do with the number, the quantity of items that finance is handling. So POs are purchase orders, we have invoices, which is showing how much is being charged to things, our receipt journals, so it's anything that has to do with entering those numbers that's not an invoice. And then, of course, we have budget amendments or line item entries, which that means that it wasn't in the original budget or it wasn't in our original accounting software, and then we're adding it in later. So all of these things kind of help us understand our fiscal health and how well we're doing as a team, but also as an organization for managing our money. And like I said, I think they're doing a great job. So now we're on to accomplishments. Again, this year, the audit came back clean, which is something to be so proud of. It's almost in my head as, you know, prideful as having a balanced budget. So a lot of the credit goes to our accounting team, but we do have basically a comptroller. Her name is Nancy, she has been here 25 years. She handles this every year for us, so we handle it internally, but we also have a professional service contract, and she works with them seamlessly. I don't know what we will do when Nancy retires, but she is one of the tried and true institutional knowledge, kind of the heart of our team. We were also awarded the Budget Award for 2023, so huge kudos to Melissa and everyone that helped with that. You'll see that the ACFR award, so you may know that as the CAFER, it's basically just the financial report. CAFER now is a dirty word, so the acronym has changed, but that again, just means that our finances came back clean. Priority-based budgeting, eCivis, which we already talked about. You'll see that we implemented a couple different softwares. And again, these are just to help us with those controls so that we understand the numbers better and they understand them better. We have a massive budget, and so it helps, you know, eliminate that human error aspect when you have a software checking what you're doing as well. Might flag something that maybe we would miss, you know, comma or a decimal point or something like that. Chart of accounts, so along with all of these new softwares, we are really trying hard to simplify chart of accounts, which is basically like if you're thinking in terms of your personal budget or your bank account, it's going to be all of those line items. So we have one for equipment or operating. When you're looking at our department budgets, it's all the line items that are broken down. So we're trying to reduce those or just make them make the most sense, both by department but also by organization. So implementing new software has given us a really good chance to exercise those and see if we need to make changes or update things. We're doing a lot of work with community development, with TIFs and CIDs and TDDs. And yes, so a lot with the CIS as well, our tax structures and the softwares. We've also done a little bit with CityWorks, which is receiving the payments that y'all were talking about earlier. So like I said, we're kind of just here to help update those policies or the new softwares as far as finance goes. So this is where things get interesting. So finance- So this is where things get interesting. So finance personnel has changed a lot. Like I said, right now there are 10 of us, so there's nine plus me. Last year there were 18. You'll see that proposed is 14. This is not us adding new people. This is the reallocation that I was talking about. So it was proposed to take three individuals from utilities and move them under us here in finance so that that was just a little bit more collaborative. They're the people that are doing the financial work already under just that separate fund. So they'll be with us and we'll kind of work to have a more comprehensive because realistically, yes, they're two different funds, the general and the utility, but they're still under the same organization. So it'll just allow us all to kind of mesh those two things. The other one is we have an unfilled procurement position. We only have one individual that's currently doing all of the bids and buying and procurement for the city. A city of this size should probably have four or five individuals, so Rich is absolutely amazing. But he needs a little bit of help. So that position is currently posted right now, and we're hoping to have someone on hopefully at the beginning of the fiscal year. So you'll see that that is also part of the 14. I think it's crucial to keep that one in. I will say that looking at this and then looking on page 145, 146, those right there, a 10% exercise for us, you'll notice that almost our entire expenditures, our personnel costs and benefits, that would easily result in a couple lost personnel numbers. 18 was already probably pretty lean for a finance department with a city of our size. 14, or realistically, the 10 that we're currently working with, it is almost too lean. So we're really excited to bring over utilities and kind of see how we can reallocate some job duties. It just, it gives us a good chance to reevaluate the whole organization. We have all the pieces. I think that we need to really function how we should. It's just gonna, the diet's gonna look a little different. So I think a 10% would definitely result in us losing at least two people off this. And I don't know that the finance department would run with 12 individuals. I think that you would start looking at audit failures. You would start looking at loss of controls, which is when, you know, embezzlement and things of that nature go unfound. So I think it's just really safe to kind of leave it where it's at. It's already about as lean as it can go as far as our numbers. And so that leads me right into our budget request. We are significantly lower than both our projected and our adopted budget. So not only was personnel cut, but basically trimmed as much as we could, but we also went through and eliminated any fat off of line items that you'll see, so like operating. You know, especially if we don't need to buy new office equipment or office supplies, we cut that. So you'll see here the major changes column. Most of it is personnel. Some of it is equipment because our software is already in place, so we don't need to buy that piece anymore. So it was either one-time charges or, like I said, we just had, you know, a computer to buy or things like that. So I put in there sort of why the change was major. If you have questions on that, I'm happy to answer, though. More line item details. We don't have any capital outlay, so I'm going to skip through this. So prior to my arrival, there were two requests by the finance department. The first one relates back to salary adjustments. So like I said, the fat has been taken off of this department, and the previous finance director was trying to reward the employees by doing a slight salary increase. I do not disagree with this in the slightest, but I think I'll always try and advocate for my team. So really, my charge for the next couple of months, especially being new, we're doing a lot of exercises within our team to see, you know, what the best path forward looks like, whether that's, you know, are we going to ask next year to add more bodies? Or do we just need to pay our people here a little bit more for the extra work they're doing? Just try and really balance, you know, work-life and all of the things. Make sure no one's going to get burnt out, but also make sure we're being fiscally responsible. So that was number one. And then number two was a budget position change. So there was the request to add two more, well, I guess technically three, increase it to three full-time equivalents. So it is only one right now, a team of Melissa. And so the request was to add two more. Both of these packages have been removed by myself just until the finance team, we can kind of regroup altogether. They've never gotten to kind of have say in what their department looks like, and I think they're the subject matter experts. They have just as good ideas as I would ever have, so I rely on them a lot. So I've been working with them to kind of do that, and I think next year you'll see that I'll have a little bit more ownership, hopefully, of this budget, and my team will have a lot of proposals for you, I think, or you'll just see a lot of changes that we're going to try and implement. So those are all of all of finances slides. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Well done, and thank you for jumping into the interim role and.
Yeah, thanks for taking it easy on me. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. This brings us to fire, and fire is on page 213, so.
Evening, Mayor Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you to answer any questions and give our proposal here for the Independence Fire Department. My name's Chuck Los. I serve as your your fire chief here and have been very honored and humbled to be able to do so for the past 10 months. It's a wonderful, wonderful department that that definitely serves this community very, very well. And it is just a true honor to to be able to be here and serve with them. Give you a little bit of an idea. This is our org chart that that we have right now. The EMS division basically works on putting together the education, the training. They work with the ARCH program. Anything that has to do with emergency medical comes out of this division, whether it is supplies that are ordered, education, working with the protocols to make sure that those are all updated. All of that stuff comes out of EMS division. The prevention division is our youngest division. This division has some new leadership in in this division. They they are, they work closely with the the codes, community development, work side by side with them in making sure that they can, they implement the the codes that are are put together, help to enforce those. We communicate well with our community development division to to help make sure that all of those codes are carried out. We work closely with the police department as well, with the investigations side of things. When we have a suspicious fire, we will work with our our police department to make sure that the investigation is done completely to the end. Some of those come back as undetermined and never will be determined, but those are, I can promise you, those fires that we have that are suspicious are thoroughly investigated to the end. They work as the public ed, yeah, public education side of things as far as going out to the schools, going out to the community, talking about our our city, talking about what the department can do to help within the community itself. The training division, training division is internal and external training. Anything that our our troops need as far as making sure that they are able to do their job day in, day out, making sure that the guys and gals in the trenches are are able to have all the training that they need to do their job. Services, work with facilities, work with apparatus, and work with equipment. All of these are aging, and we are slowly taking care of that stuff right now, as you well know, with the purchase of apparatus, with the plans that we have moving forward with our our fire facilities and with making sure that we have the proper equipment to take care of the things that are new in the industry. Suppression. I will tell you that coming here, I've worked for a couple of different communities. And I thought that that there were a couple of communities that we that we fought fires. And I thought that we were busy fighting fires until coming here. And these these, our suppression folks are, they fight fires. We are an average of almost two fire, structure fires a day, which doesn't sound much when you say two a day, but that is the rigorous amount of of work that they do on the structure fires is is amazing. And they are aggressive. I will promise you that. They're they're aggressive firefighters that are able to get in, and majority of the time, they keep it to room and contents. Room and contents mean that it doesn't expand to the entire house. So they keep the the amount of damage that is done to a structure to a minimum, if at all possible, if they can catch it in the the early stages. But they are aggressive firefighters when they go out. But that's not all they do. They they work on hazardous materials as well, hazardous material response. They're part of the the regional hazardous material response team that that responds in our area. They work in technical rescue. Technical rescue is that high and low angle rope rescue, as as we call in the industry, the dope on the rope kind of thing, that they go and rescue people that need to be rescued that are in areas that we can't get to normally. They do part of that technical rescue, five different, five different areas, but trench, confined space. These guys are trained to be able to to do all of that. They they also, the majority of their calls are EMS calls. So they they are trained to a minimum of a basic EMT, but we have several of our firefighters that are paramedics. We have a collaboration right now with MCC that we have two positions at the college that we have basically created this little agreement that we get two free positions at in the paramedic program at MCC. That is about $17,000 per person per year. So that's that's a little bit of an impact, but it helps to make sure that we're reinforcing our our EMTs so that we have that that good cache of of responders. I do want to mention that with me I have my my deputy chief, Kirk Stobart. He and my my direct assistant, Heather Tucker, were integral on putting this budget together and making sure that everything, helping out, making sure that everything was put together on this thing. So I want to give them big kudos before we continue to move on here. But that kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of what we have and what we do. There's a lot of things that we do day to day. Our mission, our mission hasn't changed. We basically are out to make sure that quality of life of our community is taken care of. Whatever they need, whatever responses that we need to go out on, that's that's what we do. We take care of that. Some operational changes that we have have made over this past year. Three additional operational battalion chiefs. That was part of the 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 public safety sales tax. So we were able to appoint those three additional operational, 24, 48 operational battalion chiefs. So now we have battalion chiefs on on two districts of our community and helping with a little bit of redundancy with our leadership when we have those emergencies. We have four additional divisional battalion chiefs. Those divisional battalion chiefs are are attached to the divisions that I just talked to. They're helping to support those divisions so that we make sure that the guys and gals in the trenches are able to get all of the the tools that they need to do to get their job done on a day-to-day basis. We we added one squad again in July, and that was helped to to help with the deployment, sorry, help with the deployment of our our call load. You're going to see the call load here pretty soon. It has changed a little bit. It has, it evened out a little bit, but we still have an enormous amount of calls that these folks go out on on a regular basis. Tremendous rebuild and replacement of the emergency response fleet. We are still working on it. We have Thursday, we have the delivery of a new quint, 100-foot quint that is coming in Thursday, that we'll we'll invite everybody out to to see that. We have a 1,000-gallon pumper that is coming, I believe, in September that is going to help to replace one of our older pumpers. And then we have a pumper and a squad coming in next year as well. We still have a lot of work to do. We have 2.4 million in the budget this year, and our deployment committee is trying to make a decision whether that's going to be for a platform or whether it's going to be for a 100-foot, what we call a straight stick, ladder and a pumper. So that, they're working on that to try to find out what is the best case scenario for the city to make sure the city is covered and taken care of safely in in all ways. We did the MOU. We talked a little bit about that, the MOU with MCC, to make sure that we get the most out of that as well. We have a great working relationship with MCC. And we've developed a more robust contract with Bryser that is going to help to backfill a smoke detector fund that has been struggling with funding in the in the past few years. So this will help the community as well. Our strategic plan, again, increasing, making sure that we provide all safety, all the safety that we can for our community and help to build that quality life for those that live and visit Independence. Our back to the basics metrics, we are, we just purchased our report management, new report management system that will help us to make more data-driven decisions. They're going to be able to, when you call and say, how many times did we give Narcan in a certain station? We will be able to get that in a very short time to be able to give you those statistics. That that new program is going to be phenomenal coming coming forward, coming forward. The strategic planning, the enhanced training, we continue with the hands-on training. We we have a philosophy. We we train like we fight. We fight like we train. So we need to get out and do a lot of training, make sure that 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 we're all ready in every facet of what we do every day. Improve our emergency medical response. Again, part of that is with our our MOU. The administrative policy and procedures, redoing those. And we're working in collaboration with local 781 in making sure that we look at every aspect. The more eyes we have on it, especially those that are doing it day to day, the better those are going to turn out. And then evaluating for the emergency spot through the city, the capital improvements, the things that we have on the the budget this year. Some of the fire metrics, we went up a little bit over 1% in our call load over this last year, but that is a tremendous amount of calls. By far, we have in our area, short of Kansas City, we are the the highest call load in in our area. So again, outside of Kansas City, kind of gives you a little bit of a an idea of what we do there. Some of those metrics, we went to the 90th percentile on our response times. The response times are right about the same. They're staying pretty close to the same on our response times. So pretty proud of that. And that is alarm two on the scene. And that is, those are pretty good numbers. That's our heat map. Kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of what our response looks like, the hot areas of the city. And those are, I will say, those are all around on on majority of our calls, whether those are fire calls, whether EMS calls, whether the service calls. That that heat map kind of gives us an idea of what what our response looks like. This is our our numbers for our apparatus, and I do apologize, they're so small, but I tried to get them all in there. Our our busiest apparatus, Pumper Five, is running almost 3,200 calls a year. So that it, they're they're very, very busy, day in, day out. Some of the major accomplishments, we're continuing to work on and implement our strategic planning process using data moving forward to make sure that that that's that strategic plan is put in place. Part of that is a succession plan, a building the bench and making sure that you don't have to do this again. So you have your people that if you want to 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 bring from within, that's what we're trying to do. We're making making sure that all of those boxes are checked. Technology committee really vetted our our report management system. You can be very, very proud. That thing will stand. stand up strong because they vetted it very, very well. They used a lot of questioning, a lot of metrics putting this thing together. So, they really worked hard to get this thing put in place. We're hoping to deploy this thing this fall, hoping. It's a monumental task, but it's going to be great on the other end. We did three hiring processes of about twenty-one firefighters. We have almost that to go yet in openings. I believe we have nineteen openings right now. So, we're continuing. But with that, a little bit farther down, we implemented a recruiting team of Independence firefighters, Independence firefighters that are going to be able to answer, hey, what do you do? How do you like the job? What's the best part? What can you tell me about it? And they are fired up. They really are. They are energized and excited about bringing new candidates to the Independence Fire Department, which is wonderful. I love seeing this. We've done well over fifteen standard operating procedures as far as redoing those. We have a lot more to do, a lot more hands-on training, operation side, EMS side. One battalion chief has been accepted into the National Fire Academy Executive Fire Officer Program. That is tremendous. The EFO program is a four-year program. It's equal to a master's. We have two that applied, one that was accepted, and they would have accepted them both, but they try not to accept two from one department because it's so competitive. But that is a major, major, major accomplishment. So, you'll be seeing that success here probably within the next four years. Some other accomplishments, we completed our mandatory life scan physicals. Wonderful. We had great, great feedback, early detection on this. Wonderful, wonderful opportunity. A successful prevention division transition, again, our youngest division. We did a great job with transitioning that. We've done over twenty-five sets of new turnout gear. We got a brand-new extractor, which is a washing machine, great big washing machine for turnout gear for the cancer program. Put that at Station Six, implemented the Bryser revenue share, which is going to help with the smoke detector program. Working with MCC, we implemented Laserfish to try to get away from paper, trying to scan as much as we can to get away from paper as much as we can to go paperless as quick as we can. Started our recruitment team. I talked a little bit about that and how excited I am about that team. They're a great group of people. Again, we worked in collaboration with Local 781 on this to find the people that we both felt were going to be energetic, were going to be great faces to go out to these young people and talk to them. So, we appreciate that collaboration big time. These are our personnel numbers, pretty similar to what we've had in the past. We did have five administrative assistants. We're down to three. We did cut two administrative assistants. We'll see how that works as far as divvying those tasks out to the other three that we have and move forward with that. But again, that's pretty similar to what we've had in the past. The budget that we have, you can see that the changes in that. We've gone up about four million in that, and the public safety sales tax, there was a significant change in that as part of that. The general fund, impact on the general fund is about twenty-four million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand and forty-nine dollars and some change. So... Some of our capital outlay that we're looking at is the three-hundred-thousand on driveway repairs, basically sets up our station number one as a parking lot area, secured parking lot area. We've had two firefighters that have had their vehicle stolen from Station One and several that have been vandalized or stolen or broken into. So, we're trying to create some security at Station One with some fencing, some lighting, and trying to get that put in place. Some of the other significant things, the building finance for the new buildings, the building design, part of that is the survey and looking at the ground, replacement of command vehicles. The majority of the command vehicles have over a hundred thousand miles on them. So, they've been very well-used, but it's coming to a time where we're looking at what the cost of maintaining them compared to replacing. Image Trend is our report management system. That is that implementation this next year and making sure that that thing steps off. Talked about the two-point-four million for the apparatus, hundred thousand for radios, hundred thousand for upfits, that outfit of the squads, are the sirens, the lights, the, some of the equipment that we have to replace to make sure that that stuff is in good shape. A couple of the budget requests that we had, we had an additional community paramedic. That position was going to kind of spread out or umbrella over a couple of different areas. One was going to be able to backfill the arch program. The other was going to be a quality assurance and making sure to take, look at some of the reports, making sure that everything is in good shape moving forward, doing the education and training for our firefighters internally. That was one of the requests that we had. One of the other requests that we had was for raises for our non-represented staff. Our non-represented staff from our battalion chiefs up to the deputy chief are the bottom of the comparables, the very bottom. So, one of the things we looked at was a seven percent to help with that compression of rank where the captains are starting to creep up toward making what the battalion chiefs make. So, we looked at that, trying to spread that out a little bit. About seventy thousand dollars was going to be out of the public safety sales tax because those folks are in that, they're covered by that safety sales tax. The other forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand is going to be out of the general fund, is what we requested out of this budget. Impacts are on any kind of budget reduction, and I know we asked for ten percent, but we looked at this, at any kind of impact or any kind of budget reduction is going to impact our infrastructure that we're trying to catch up with that can that we've kicked down the road as far as our apparatus, as far as our facilities, as far as our staffing. We're nineteen down right now. We're trying to catch up so that we can start to balance that, those budget figures back again. And then the personal protective equipment is the other thing. We are very, very proud that we are, we're strong with our cancer initiative, and part of that is having that second set of gear that when they go out on that structure fire, they can come back, wash that gear up, and have a second set that they can use before they go back out on another call with that.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
Sure.
All right.
First question is just terminology. When you say quint, what, can you define that for me just so that I know what you're talking about?
Yeah. Quint is basically a pumper with a big ladder on it. So, it is a large piece of equipment. It is a truck company because it has that hundred-foot ladder on top. It is able to transport more firefighters in the event that we would need to. But it has everything that an engine and a truck has on it, other than a platform. A quint would not have a platform on it. So, it's got the ladder, it's got the pump, it's got the hoses. It is packed.
Okay. All righty. Let's see here. I was looking at the budget for training and professional development, and I noticed that there's salary in there, and this may not be a question for you. This may be over to your left, but there's salary and benefits estimated and proposed budget, but there's no people in there. So, I was trying to figure out how we get there.
So...
I'm on page two-twenty-one, Melissa.
I'll have to look at that. That may have charges that are not related to an actual person being in there. It could be something like a retiree or something else, but I'll look and see because there's a lot of line items that fall within the salary and benefits, and it's not always a salary. So, I'll double-check that for you.
All right. I appreciate that.
And if it's under training, it may, and I'm not sure on Melissa, but we hire outside training sometimes for people to come in and do some, do some training for us from an external source.
Gotcha. Okay. I think, I think that's all heck.
Okay. All right.
Very good. Anyone else? Please proceed.
So, I'm on the page two-fourteen. I'm looking at the overall fire budget. I'm looking at twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three year at twenty-nine million. I understand the five million dollars for capital outlays, but, you know, looking at twenty-two to twenty-four, you got a twenty-five percent budgetary increase, which is pretty hefty.
Sorry about that. I just need to look at it real quick. So, we did have a few as far as personnel increases, but I think the biggest impact of increase, if you look at the public safety sales tax, that impacted that bottom line significantly as we moved across that from twenty-two to this year. Last year's was eight, eight-point-eight maybe. This year's was fifteen. So, that was a significant change that added into that bottom line total budget.
So, that's on the revenue side, if I'm understanding that correctly. So, I just, I'm looking at that. That's just a big increase in your costs. You think that's all salary increases or number of personnel overtime?
So, some of it is salary and personnel increases because if you look, and if you look at the adopted budget with those, with that amount, the ten-point-two million in twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, so some of that increase will be for personnel expenses. A lot of it is going to be, this year, we included amounts for starting the fire, fire station projects. So, there's some design fees that haven't previously been budgeted for. I think you've also got some additional equipment that you've budgeted for. So, there's just, there's a variety of factors.
So, just making sure that I'm keeping track here, capital expenditures, you have one-point-eight million dollars, which I assume are going to be your design fees, et cetera, five-point-four million dollars for transfers out to capital projects.
The one-point-eight million that was in there last year, if I am remembering correctly, that was just for one or two pieces of fire apparatus. So, there wasn't anything included last year in the budget for the design fees for the fire station. But when you're looking at your twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget and you're looking at that transfers out to capital projects, that does include the design fees this year.
The one-point-eight would have included a squad and a pumper that we purchased, I believe, I just had gotten here, so I think it was September that we started that process.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Chief, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We're also at seven-forty-five, so after about ninety minutes, we need a bit of a break. So, using Judge Helm's terms, we'll take a recess for about five minutes and come back and look at municipal services. So using Judge Helm's terms, we'll take a recess for about five minutes and come back and uh look at municipal services.
I'm Lisa Reynolds, Director of Municipal Services, and I will try and get you through all six of these funds as quickly as possible.
No worries.
All right, so this is the um actual old structure. Facilities management is no longer under municipal services. You actually heard about that piece from with Morris last night. Um, but we did transition through this fiscal year, so you'll see some of those numbers um reflected in that. So just wanted to include it for that reason. Um, but these are our major divisions. Um, mission, uh the short version, take care of public infrastructure and protect public and environmental health. Um, after our planning or strategic planning session, I'm well aware that this doesn't fit on a T-shirt and was well more than five words and needs to be rewritten. Um, we have as a department several connections to the action plan, as you would expect with the um the all capital projects run through engineering, except for those with IPL. Um, we're involved in all infrastructure and development and all those pieces, right? So um several again pieces here. Um, a well-planned city obviously is the strongest um connection that we have to the action plan, but we do touch on all of them. Some major accomplishments over the last year. Um, very proud of our wastewater treatment plant. They were selected as the state's plant of the year for our size, which was very exciting. Um, the department was able to obtain sixteen point two million in grant funds this year for various projects. Um, we did assist with the purchase of the Gihar, the landmark building. We expanded the enterprise lease program um to help control costs for vehicles throughout the city into additional divisions. And we um had a successful modification of IPL rate structure in our customer service software. And a a big, long overdue item finally um got adoption of the Design and Construction Manual that was before you all last September. Um, just to continue, the completion of the forty highway complete streets, major improvement to that corridor. Um, we with the preventative, the pavement maintenance program, uh touched fifty point eight three lane miles of roadway this last year and um had a hundred percent pass rate on all of our water samples, implemented new cost cus- customer service call software. Um, the biggest feature of that from a customer service perspective is we finally have a callback feature. So people don't have to be in the queue line forever anymore. We can just have them push a button and return a call at a scheduled time, which is huge improvement. And then um part of that cross-functional team and effort in the action plan, we did work with uh Parks and Rec to overlay uh about half of Woodlawn Cemetery roads. And that was completely done with in-house staff and materials, so huge cost savings for um that department as well. So fully staffed, we're almost at two forty, if we could be fully staffed. Um, this is just the breakdown um by those by the funds. Um, water being the largest of them and the biggest um jump between sanitary and the water utilities would be that customer service component that's roughly twenty-six uh FTEs just by itself. Um, we will do a deeper dive into all these, but this is just the overview of all six of the funds that are part of municipal services um and our budget requests. So general fund at five uh five point five million, you guys can read, I won't go through all of them. I will note for you that um so we're totaling eighty million here. If you're following along in your budget book, that number is closer to one twenty-four. So this is just looking at operating dollars. It doesn't include capital and it doesn't include debt service. So um capital is about roughly thirty-three million and change piece of that, and we'll go into those capital projects toward the end. And then our debt service is roughly ten million. Um, six point two of that is just sanitary sewer alone, and that's all tied to debt issued for the consent decree several years ago. Okay, so the general fund portion, um this would be engineering, construction, um the non-street sales tax portion of street maintenance. And then you'll see facilities, again, just showing that transition from us to parks. Um, administration here is looks high for the headcount associated with it, but that is in this cost center and for general fund where the non-department internal service charges are held would be in that administrative line item. Um, so that's a big factor there. And then engineering, if you look over the historical trend, um you'll see that we broke that out now into engineering and construction. So the difference, engineering would be the planning, design and approving of plans. Construction would be the field inspectors, the right-of-way division and boots on the ground, actually in the field, looking at those as they're being built. The storm sales tax um has these three major divisions. By and large, most of the money goes to operation and maintenance, which would be salaries, materials, professional services and all of those things. Um, we did have a jump in permit compliance this year. That permit compliance historically has only been one contract, and that's with the USGS for a creek walking program that we do annually um to look for any illicit discharge is discharges in a specific stream every year, just to make sure there's nothing in the water that shouldn't be there. There's a lot of lab and testing that goes along with that, as well as staff time to run that program. Um, the increase this year, and again, you'll see this as a packet slide later, but um is a includes a hundred thousand dollars for to the um Army Corps for a study of Little Blue uh watershed. And that is being done by the Corps and coordinated through the Mid-America Regional Council. This is um this year's portion of that study. Um, it's already approved, but previously was held in capital. But since it's not a capital project that should be depreciated or anything like that, we're just moving it to the proper place in operating budget. Sanitary, um the operating piece without capital requesting roughly twenty-nine million, um which is not just a few hundred thousand up from what the adopted budget was this previous year. Um, again, some of the notable jumps, non-department jumped quite a bit. Um, treatment, chemicals, things like that are um a higher cost. And the inter-jurisdictional, we see a big jump every year. This jump actually was um the smallest one probably in my time here. And the biggest piece of that inter-jurisdictional piece would be our contract with Little Blue Valley Sewer District. So all but two watersheds in the city flow to Little Blue Valley for treatment instead of Rock Creek Treatment Plant. For water, um again, just some transitioning with the merging of water into municipal services that happened this year. We're trying to make all of the accounting consistent, so we're always looking at apples to apples. Um, previously, administration had held several different divisions. You can see them there because they're zeroed out now. Um, but facilities, engineering and construction were all held in engineering, even though they're not really or they were held in administration, even though they're not really admin functions. Um, so we've just sectioned those out and charged appropriately um based on the headcount doing those tasks. And the same in um laboratory, that was previously a part of production and has now been pulled out as its own piece because sanitary held it as its own piece. And there's actually um that's one of the the good stories about the merger is that we were able to share staff. And that was one of the specific places we had openings and available headcount at Rock Creek. And that staff was qualified to go and do the testing and supervision at both plants. And so they do, they just split their time between them now. So before we talk about revenues, I just want to put a couple of revenue risks before you. Um, these are the not fun things to talk about, but I just want you to be aware. Um, we do have flat utility revenue. So sanitary sewer hasn't had a rate increase since twenty-twenty, and water has been much, much longer than that. Um, inflation ties right along with this. It is absolutely impacting the cost of our projects and what we can get do for the what we can get done with the same money that we've put aside typically every year for capital projects. So the same four million in capital for sewer that we've done year over year is not getting us the amount of projects that it once did. So again, just impacting that concern with the flat revenues. Um, acquiring adequate grant funding for needed projects, this one hits home um as it pertains to bridges. We struggle, we apply for grants and grants and grants for bridges and we just have very little success. Um, so need all the help we can get there. It's constantly a struggle. Um, the last three are all regulatory changes that put unknowns on the horizon for both water and sewer. And so unknowns um tend to be costly. They typically mean changes in our treatment processes, so we just want to have them out there. So we're talking about them as early as we can, so everyone's on the same page. Um, so just the five-year outlook on sanitary, you can see, and this, like the general fund, has been pushed out a few years. It was actually this current fiscal year was originally the first year we were supposed to be negative, and that's been pushed. Um, so now sanitary is not projected to go negative until fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, that can be modified. You know, we're always looking for more efficient ways to do things and ways to save money um for this reason. But um I don't know that we can push it off forever, so that's a conversation that we'll definitely need to have. Um, water looks the same, goes negative a year earlier. However, I will preface this by saying this is a huge increase in capital project expenditures from previous years. So there have been several years that we've talked about the main replacement program and replacing one percent of the system a year. This is actually funding that and some additional, you'll see in the list, um plant equipment replacement and things like that that have are have long needed to be addressed and are being addressed. So this capital projects could costs could be pared down, but they're all needed things. So while we can push them out a year or two, maybe here and there, it's not like collectively we can just ignore those projects. So again, just something we'll be talking about in the future. So again, overview of the revenues by fund. Revenues on the general fund, um our our biggest cost to the gen- or our biggest um budget request is the street maintenance portion. That obviously doesn't have any kind of revenue stream associated with it. So the revenue represented here are things like sale selling of recycled materials, uh solid waste disposal, um fees that we would charge at drop-off depot, construction permits, um special events permits, so very limited there. And then street sales taxes quarter or street sales tax is a half-cent sales tax, stormwater is a quarter cent, and then obviously sanitary and water are rates-based revenues. This is the um entire department's capital outlay list for the year. You can see it's pretty much standard equipment. These are all replacements of existing. Um, and sanitary is first, then storm, fund two is general fund, and eleven is streets. And then this entire page would be water. And those are all um large purchases that are under that hundred thousand dollar threshold to be considered actual capital projects. Um, and as speaking of capital, our CIP, there was one CIP project that was funded this year um for municipal services on the general fund side, and that was a portion of the what is in here is Spring Branch Complex, although that's certainly not where it will probably end up at this point. Um, but what this is is a combined operations facility. Um, it would vacate ultimately um the Chrisler Complex, sewer maintenance um down the street on Truman. Truman and Forest, water distribution, construction co- um location. Um, including everybody, Central Garage is also part of um the Chrisler Complex. So those are buildings that um the oldest of among them were built in thirty-two or thirty-four. And Truman and Forest was built in forty-two. So definitely aging infrastructure that needs to be dealt with. Um, this is a small portion, and this is something you'll be seeing on the capital list for a few years as we are trying to cash fund it. Um, and you'll see it repeated uh across all the funds that would be housed there. So these, this is the list of projects for um streets. So pavement maintenance, all of the complete streets type programs, sidewalks to schools, all of that would fall here. And then corresponding to this would be, these are the grant reimbursable projects. So this slide, these dollars would be our portion. Um, and if you flip back between them, so I'm sorry, these are the ones that are at the grant reimbursable portion. So Truman Connected Phase Two, for example, um our portion of that would be two hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars plus the grant reimbursable portion of seven hundred and nineteen thousand. So just the projects don't look necessarily as big when you see them on the CIP list because they have this grant component as well. So just again for information. Um, fund thirteen, this is stormwater. All these, with the exception of the Spring Branch Complex and trenchless tech, would be um drainage improvements um for areas that have no or undersized infrastructure to collect stormwater. The trenchless technologies is um would be pipe lining and things like that. So we're trying to not do excavations as much as possible, but these would still be structural repairs to pipes. Sanitary, we also have trenchless, um Spring Branch and the Upper Adair Interceptor would be the biggest projects for this upcoming year. The Upper Adair Interceptor is a capacity issue that's been part of our master plan for several years. Um, finally setting aside money to address that. Um, most of them otherwise would be relocations, replacements, and again, dealing with capacity. And the water side, um again, just by and large, equipment that needs to be replaced. And then the five million dollars, the biggest piece of this would be the main replacement program. So packet requests for the street sales tax, this amount is not the cost of the van. It's the overage over what we had budgeted and allowed for the van that we're looking to replace. Um, we use it for a lot of oversized bulky object trash pickup, mattresses, couches, things that find their way into the street to be dumped instead of um dealt with properly. So we've spent thirty-eight thousand over the past few years um taking care of this vehicle. It's well past time for something that can be replaced for sixty-five, so we put this request in. On the stormwater side, this is, like I mentioned earlier, the hundred thousand dollars to move from what was previously CIP into operations. We've already committed to this study. It's just moving it so it's in the appropriate location in the budget. And these next two are um both uh the next three are all equipment um to increase efficiency, the speed or safe and or safety with which we do detention, basin clearing and creek crossing clearing to take care of our infrastructure. Um, so brush hog for that, flail moat attachment for the creek crossing and a equipment trailer um to haul it, again, replacing a twenty-year-old trailer that's time and costing us more than it's worth to keep the existing one in service. On sanitary, we only had one expansion packet, and this is just again, the overage of what was budgeted for professional services specifically related to uh street repair after um sanitary repairs in the right-of-way. We uh with the adoption of the Design and Construction Manual, did increase our standard and expectation of what street repairs look like. Patches are larger, they go cover the entire width of the lane and things like that, but that requires more material that affects our utilities as well as external utilities. So this is just accounting for that overage. And then water, both of these are personnel-related. Um, asking for additional pipe, two additional pipe workers in the water fund for some regulatory regulatory changes. Um, we now have to verify the material that service lines are constructed from, and that takes a lot of staff time to go and verify that. So is it, it's for the lead and copper rule, making sure that we don't have lead service lines and things like that. So basically going and verifying that these are indeed copper, as we say they are. Um, but that takes additional staff time over and above. But that takes additional staff time over and above to meet the new required levels. So that's that request. And then chemical request, again, inflation is hurting across the board. And we have to have phosphate, we have to have chlorine, we have to have the things we need to treat the water to make it drinkable and put out into the system. So while it's in as a request, this one, we have to do. And again, the doomsday scenario, what if? And again, this is only related to the general fund, right? Because we can't very well say, oh, we're just going to cut 10% of something that's an enterprise fund. So for us, this, it's a very small portion of the department overall, but it would still mean discontinuing the drop-off depot service altogether and cutting two FTEs. We would have to reduce our maintenance supply purchases and we would not be able to replace computers and several small tools that we budgeted for. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
And again, just to, and again, just to state to everyone, this was an exercise for math. It is not an attempt at this point to do anything in order to be looking at that in any way, shape or form as this council. It was just an exercise in math. So thank you. Anyone, any further discussions? Please proceed.
I assume that when you say we go negative, it is when the enterprise fund no longer supports its costs by its revenues?
Correct.
Okay. And so, you know, it's hard for people to absorb utility changes. I certainly hope the proposals that we will be considering will bring them up slowly over time and not wait until we're in a place where we have to make a big jump. And I know that we had that special assessment for the sewer, on the sewer side, water treatment side, excuse me. When does that retire?
So I believe, we did some refinancing of the debt issuances required tied to the consent decree. I believe the last one is in 2042. Goes for quite some time. We took seven years off of one of the issuances, but there were three associated with that. It was almost $90 million in debt to do the federally required projects that was part of that decree. And that is the $12 environmental compliance fee that's on every bill, on every account.
So, you know, same thing, metering and slow increases on the sewage side. So we don't clobber people will be important. Sorry, it's complex budget. Just trying to understand, I know that we are working on water main replacement, but we've certainly had a bunch of ruptures and water main breaks. I assume all of those emergency plans are in here as well? Or do we just kind of, whoops, we gotta slide stuff over from our capital?
No, they're, they're part of the operating budget. And in materials, operating supplies, you'd find line items for repair clamps, things like that to make those repairs. We track the number of repairs, the types of break it was. Water mains break in three different ways. But so yes, all of the geeky stuff that goes along with tracking that, we, we do all of that and try and, and use that to estimate what we expect to need. As far as the main replacement, we have several small galvanized mains in town that are quite problematic. So it's the goal of this replacement program to attack those trouble mains first. So hopefully we can help also over time bring down the annual number of breaks that we have.
So just looking at environmental changes, periods of drought, subsidence. You know, we're going to probably over time have more breaks as we're seeing some of those shifts. Mercifully, we've had a very wet year and so that helps. That the water main replacement will help offset some of that.
I am. One of the other changes that was part of the design and construction manual was allowing pipe materials other than just ductile iron. So for instance, HDPE has a lot more flexibility to it. So when used in the right application that factors in proper pressure and everything else, that could give us a little more bend in those lines. So when the ground does contract, and that's when you get a full circle break, if you ever care to know, it basically just snaps the pipe and has a ring all the way around. Yeah, it would help with some of those. So if we can mitigate certain types, if we can mitigate the corrosion caused breaks, then we can help bring those down. If we can decrease the, the ones that are from ground shift, then we can, and part of that is material.
And I'd love to give you an opportunity to brag a little bit about your stormwater work and the number of flooding incidents you had before and the number we've had with these recent rains.
So the stormwater sales tax is just, that is a testament to something going to do exactly what it was designed to do. I've been here nine years, just a little over. And when I got here on a really severe storm, we'd have over 100 calls, maybe 200 on the worst ever that I saw. But historically, even the, the tax has been in place for 20 years now, right? So hundreds and hundreds of calls. In our worst storm this year so far, we had, I think it was only three. So, and they were actually sewer-related and not storm-related. So gross improvements in the system. And so, yeah, huge win for the sales tax and just again, dedicated funding that did exactly what it was supposed to do and continues to, as we still have capacity-related projects on the books.
Sometimes it's hard for people to appreciate things that are underground and disasters that don't happen.
Yes.
But that's quite a testament to-
Disaster avoidance is a beautiful thing.
Prevention. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any further questions? Anyone else? Go ahead, sorry.
So first of all, Lisa, on you, you showed a revenue slide back ways. And a number of those, I noticed that you were projecting, I mean, the, the estimated for this year was higher than what you're projecting for next year. Can you speak to that?
So we're, we're conservative kids over in the utilities. And you'll see this on an IPL slide with a number that also doesn't jive exactly with what's in the budget book. The, usually the interest income projections are much more conservative than what we've seen over the last couple of years. So that's usually the biggest difference. For instance, I know in stormwater, we used to budget $3,000 and we finally upped that when two years in a row, we saw closer to six figures. So that's usually the discrepancy. The biggest discrepancy would be the interest income, but it's terrifying to rely on that. So we try and be more conservative.
Well, I noticed across the board that your estimated is substantially lower than what your actual budget was. And so, in fact, that caused me a little bit of consternation today as I was finishing my review and, and I did some analysis. I'm like, what is going on? And then I figured it out. Actually, and Melissa and Zach helped me figure it out. So, but question on the engineering side. So we're going from 12.6 to 3.5, but you said some of them were moving to other areas? And I see like, construction has 2.55. Are those engineers or is that? I'm just trying to understand a little bit more about the engineering piece.
So our headcounts are confusing, to say the least. Salaries are split in multitude of ways. My salary is split six different ways across all the funds, right? So what you see are portions of several people's salaries. So they add up to that many FTEs, but they, if they're in construction, they are construction inspectors, right-of-way inspectors, or the people that supervise that group. If they're in engineering, they are engineers or engineering techs that are doing drafting work, surveying, plan design, plan approval and things like that.
Okay, all right, that's helpful. Let's see what else I had. I got a whole lot of red writing on here, but most of that was corrected today. So I think we're, I think we're pretty good. You just got lots of pages.
Yeah, there's a whole.
All right, I think I'm, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
I forgot a couple of things. What's an interceptor? You talked about $2 million for an interceptor.
A really big sewer pipe.
Okay, big sewer pipe, got it.
It wouldn't, it, much larger. So your average residential eight-inch pipe would be what you'd find in a neighborhood. Eight-inch, four-inch service line, eight-inch pipe collects, dumps into interceptors that I can easily stand and walk through.
Got it. One of the hard parts in your job is that it's not just the things you control, but you have EPA, you have water issues, you have watershed issues shared with other people. So you have a very complex realm. You have some potential unknowns coming. Can you help me understand what those might be and how we would adjust to those? So I'm, I'm guessing like, they change the rules on what you can release? And how many parts are allowed in that PFAS? There's just a whole bunch of-
So PFAS is a huge one. Lots of monitoring is going on right now. We are below detectable limits on the drinking water side, so good news from a starting point. The bigger risk we are afraid of is on the sewer side and what limits may be put in place that we would be expected to remove. There are not very many processes. I'm only aware of one, to be honest, by, by trade name anyway, that is claiming to eliminate PFAS. And so it is not a process that we currently have in place. So it would either be in addition to or replace an existing unit of process which could potentially disrupt the entire treatment train and obviously could potentially be very costly. We don't know yet what that looks like. We've got a little more assurance around the nitrogen and phosphorus removal levels. Those are changing, so our existing permit, we have monitoring requirements, but no removal. The Missouri Department of Natural Resources has already told us our next permit will have removal levels. Now, we've been selected from, by the state to be a demonstration site. And so we're going to have some studies done and look at our levels and, and some estimating done free of charge for being a demo site and just kind of, you know. We, we're happy to be guinea pigs if it helps get a better product in the end, right? And so, and it does save our rate payers some money because we, we aren't putting that as any, you know, no cost to us. So since we've been monitoring, we, we know kind of what we're looking at for removal, but we, those removal levels haven't been set. But the state has finally said that they're still like seven to 10 years out. So we have time. And as the, the removal limits are certain, then we'll know what kind of process, if we're looking at additional processes or just enhancing what we have here, which is at this point, still an option and ideal. But we'll wait and see, but definitely more assurances on timeline and potential costs associated with that.
And do you think there'll be any regulatory changes on sludge? Because that's another area that's getting a lot of attention.
So we're doing, on the water side, we're doing a sludge study, a best professional judgment study on what to do with the discharge from Courtney Bend. Waiting to get those results back and then see. I, I think that the cost there, again, we're going to come out on the good side of that and it'll probably be minimal, minimal addition compared to what it could be. But that's actually in process right now.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Please proceed.
I was just curious, on the $16.2 million grant dollars that you get, was that list that you had up there, was that a project list of, for this money? Or is there another project list for this money?
Those dollars would be included pieces of, in, in several of those projects, yes. It's a small number compared to last year. Last year it was, the number was 35 million and change that we were able to bring in in grants. But one was the Nolan Road Grant and that was 10.16 in and of itself. So it definitely fluctuates year to year.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got one follow-up. You talked about that we hadn't had a sewer increase since 20, I think you said. And a long time before that, before water, right? Do you anticipate at some point, I mean, I know that like water, we were able to build up substantial dollars, but we're going to use it, you know, on the capital improvements for. Do you anticipate needing to raise, you know, those rates at any point in time? I mean, I know maybe not this year, but you know, I mean, obviously at some point they're going to have to go up.
I'm going to give you a really unpopular answer and say yes.
Yeah, I, I thought so. I just, you know, I, I knew that was, I, I was afraid to ask that question, but I thought that might be the case. So I just, you know, I mean, things don't get cheaper in this world, unfortunately.
They do not, especially right now.
Yeah, right, so, okay. All right, I just was trying to, I just wanted to get a sense for that.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, obviously personnel is a huge piece and, and those change every year. But the capital side of it and really investing back in that system. We can choose to invest in our system or we can be federally forced to invest in our system. And $90 million consent decree versus planning it out over time and having, and controlling that narrative is really the goal. So while they should be small increases and that would be, that's always the goal, is to keep that as manageable as possible. I would much rather see us control that narrative on our end than try and push those off to save a few dollars now when it would cost us much more later.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Lisa, my question was primarily the same and I just wanted to follow up on it. You know, we're looking at the sanitary sewer fund. The amount of revenue was, is flat or actually declining some. And when you look at the water fund outlook, it was $41 million in 2023, 2024. It's going to be roughly 37 million going forward. And then, you know, very large fund balances going negative going forward. How do our, I just think this would be an important question for us to do an in-depth study session on, on both of them and say, what are we, what are we anticipating? What do we need? How do we compare to other, you know, cities with regards to the funds, the expenses for both of those for our citizens? All of that, so.
Actually, we do a rate comparison as part of the budget process every year and that will actually be presented at the next PUAB meeting where we fall compared to all the jurisdictions, the surrounding and similar jurisdictions throughout the state. So we do have that information that we can share at any time. But it is just to look at each of the three utilities and, and where they stack compared to others. But again, the capital side, those fund balances, they may look inflated, but we're so, especially in the case of sanitary. On water side, that capital program hasn't really gotten going. And so now we're starting that and that will cause that decline. On the sewer side, we have to cash fund everything because we're not bonding out anymore. We're not taking any more loans or doing anything that. So while it might look like we're stockpiling money, it's for a project that has to be paid for over several years, like the complex, the, the building.
Okay. Very good, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Mr. City Manager, you can reach for the microphone.
You're stuck with me again.
This is not the IPL director. The IPL director is on vacation and unfortunately had to make a tough choice between the wifi package or the drink package. And I think you can tell which one he chose. So Lisa's going to fill in and give that presentation for you this evening.
Wow, I'm impressed.
There you go.
Will you get a, a portion of his income to, to pay for this? He, he owes you then.
I, I think so. I mean, we'll see, we'll see how it goes and then we'll decide.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Power and light, again, the major divisions of the department. Mission, provide reliable, safe and cost-effective electricity to all of our customers. Some significant operational changes, I would call them challenges in this instance. Succession planning and maintaining staff have been a huge issue for IPL this year, huge. We've had retirements, just the inability to recruit. Made a few salary offers recently and they went to either BPU or some private utility for more money. So that's continuing to pose a problem. I am here presenting because there's not a good second in command in IPL right now to do this in Joe's place, right? So that is a huge issue. And then again, significant price increases and supply chain issues plague all three of the utilities. So this is a common theme. Connections to the strategic plan, again, they touch, IPL touches all, all parts of that plan. Everyone, the department, especially in the city as well, is very proud of IPL's reliability. So this is just a little chart to compare, like our average, you know, looking at the current year over- current year over prior year outages and what the average duration is. And then, Joe did think it was fun to let everyone know that top five, the actual number one cause of power outage is squirrels. So, I promised I would pass that along. Done. Major accomplishments, again, that reliability, we get this award year over year, and that's just a testament to the staff of IPL and their dedication to keeping the lights on. The TreeLine USA Award, Gold Safety Award, again, just all, all good things that they're being recognized for. And then that last one, Dogwood Gas Prepay Contract was renewed, which does keep, keep the cost down for purchases of natural gas, just helping the, on the financial sustainability front, control those long-term costs. Personnel, going up a little bit in FTEs this year. You can see the note there at the bottom that they removed a position, they're adding two packets that you'll see later in the presentation. And the budget request, so, again, broken down by all of the different divisions. Total request of 160, almost 170 million. Biggest jump there in any single category would be in the capital projects. A lot of that, and again, I have this in a slide later, but would be related to the new Substation S that is to be built. Over 7 million is dedicated to that substation alone, so that kind of, that accounts for that big jump in CIP. The proposed revenues, here's where I said it differs, that we like to be conservative in the utilities. This number differs on the proposed budget of what is in your budget books. This factors in potential build but not paid power and light bills. We have a great collection rate, over 99% for the city as a whole. It doesn't always mean it comes in in the fiscal year it was supposed to. So, this has some variance from your budget book, just again, erring on the side of being conservative. Some of the things driving good numbers on the revenue side would be the higher energy market prices or generating increased revenues. We did remove the 6% previous discount that had been in place, and then the offset energy costs, again, driven by natural gas prices. Capital outlay plan for this year, these are all pretty run-of-the-mill replacements of things that have exceeded their life expectancy. Just most, yeah, mostly equipment and some security and telemetry items. The CIP, again, if you look at the second, third, and fourth line items down, those are all pieces but related to that new Substation S, so you can total those, again, accounting for that big jump in capital. And again, most of these just replacements of equipment that are due. The Substation S is the one big new thing. Packet requests, there are two personnel requests this year, both related to just trying to do the best with staff as we can. So, this one is just workload related and need an additional person to deal with all of the field equipment. IPL does repairs for traffic signals, cameras, a host of things that you don't think of necessarily as traditionally IPL, so just an extra person to help with that. For a total of 146, that's fully loaded with salary and benefits. And the second packet request would be for a district planner. Really, really struggling to hire engineers. Again, that is common in municipal services and IPL, and so, both departments have started looking at ways to, okay, if we can't find this, what would also be useful, maybe instead help out with the workload? So, in this instance, looking at trying to find a district planner to help with the engineering division. So, doesn't serve in the exact same capacity, but maybe a better shot and might have a little bit better luck with that. And again, $124,000 fully loaded with salary and benefits. And that one's much shorter when you don't have to go through six funds. So, I'm happy to try and answer any questions you have for IPL.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone, any questions?
Yes, but I think my questions are all gonna wait for the IPL study, so I'll hold those.
Well, I'm the same way. Most of my questions will wait for that as well, but I do think I have a couple. But first of all, if you or the Health Department has any squirrel reduction plan, I'd like to know it, because I have a whole bunch of them, so. All right. In Communications, it talked about a number of things connected to the rest of the city. Is that then something that is, goes through inter-fund, you know, charges and gets split out among the various, or would that, you know, be paid for, at least in part, by general fund and other funds or?
That is a separate division in IPL, so the communications piece you're referring to, along with any software subscription, tech services charge, finance charge, or anything else, would actually be the very bottom of the non-department line. So, this one would be the headcount line, and the budget number, third from the bottom, would be non-department.
Okay, okay.
For those charges. And again, those are radios. Lisa, just a host of things feed into that number.
Okay, all right. Let me just look here real quick. So, instead of the curiosity on this one, Utility Field Service said, it says in here that it's responsible for turning on both electric and water service. So, does that mean it builds out part of that cost to water, or how does that?
Yes, there's a very strange, strangely formed group. They're steelworkers that are actually, have a memorandum of understanding in place to be, fall under IBW rules. So, it's a weird cross-functional team, we'll call it.
Okay.
But yes, they do turn on and turn offs for both.
Okay.
And there are inter-fund charges for customer service that, so sewer pays a portion of customer service. IPL and, sorry, IPL and water have funds going back and forth between them to cover the cost of those individual groups.
Okay. Yeah, I think the rest of my questions will wait till we get the studies.
Okay. Anyone else?
Anyone else have other further questions? And, Mr. City Manager, I'm not gonna ask for an answer to this, but we can talk about it in our meetings on Friday. So, the pending legislation in Washington DC concerning transformers and how that's gonna impact us, so we can talk about that on Friday. Also, opportunities to increase business services and, you know, business income with IPL. And then obviously, how, what impact does it have on economic development for the city and also North Point Development? How's that going with regards to all of that? We spend a lot of money on tree trimming, how are we in regards to that? So, there'll be a lot of questions on Friday to address, but rather than take our time there and take everybody's time, I think we do that. Does that sound good to you, Mr. City Manager?
That sounds great, yes, sir.
Okay. And I know that's a lot, and if you like, I'll cut, copy, and paste and email it to you, so you've kind of got it.
That'd be great, yep.
That'll make it easy for you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. City Manager, is there a way that we can get a global number on grants? I think it really helps people understand that we are doing everything we can to leverage other resources. You talked about grants on your side, and I know police gets grants, et cetera. I just think it would be really helpful to be able to talk about that as a piece of the pie.
Yes, I think we, I'll work with the budget manager, and I think we can pull a summary together for you and disseminate that to the council.
Anyone else have other further questions? Please.
Yes, Mr. City Manager. I am getting a lot of questions and concerns about the storm response.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if it would be helpful for me to know, sort of take a deep dive into how that goes and who does what. Wondering if we can add that to a study session and maybe talk about the response to this last storm. I think that would be nice for transparency with that.
Yeah, be happy to work with our staff and share that, and then I know we certainly have talked about having some debrief on things we can improve upon as well, so I think having that discussion will allow us to get that feedback from the council and look for improvement opportunities.
Right, thank you.
And if I can just follow up on that, because it's a really great point. Obviously, all of us have gotten phone calls on that, and if I'm correct, Mr. City Manager or Lisa, in Country Meadows, if I'm correct, they lost four poles.
They did.
And that, you just can't put a pole up in 30 minutes. It just take, and particularly then reconnecting all the lines, obviously being safe, all of that, it just, and I know those folks, I got a number of calls from folks who are friends of mine there, or other citizens who knew my number, and they called, and I know a lot of you also got calls on that, but I think it would be important, following up on your question, is to have kind of an update of what happened there, because that was, that's rare for us to have an outage that goes longer than 24 hours.
Yep.
And I think that one was maybe closer to 36 or so. I could be wrong, but I just think that's, you know, you bring up a really great question on that, so.
I'm gonna come back to what Sam Morris talked about with emergency preparedness and the HOAs, you know? My HOA kind of went through and mapped like, who needs refrigeration for medications? Who has a CPAP machine? Like, who's gonna be in super-duper trouble if they don't have electricity? And that kind of neighborhood response, we just wrapped around all the people who we knew needed some TLC, and the person with the refrigerator took everybody's insulin home. I just think that we're going to have more and more weather events that are more and more difficult, and we have an aging population, so we have a complex group when they run out of electricity or water or whatever else. And I just think this is one of those cross-departmental partnerships that is gonna be increasingly important going forward. Thank you.
Yep.
I can tell you, just in response to this last storm, I, you know, we're still working through all the details and collecting that information, but there were four poles out in Country Meadows, but we were at least at 30 throughout the city. So, consider finite number of crews. We did call for mutual aid, so we had three other municipalities that were here assisting. So, it was localized, and it absolutely was a longer than average outage for us, but I mean, four in one neighborhood is unfortunate and rare, but when you're looking at 30 overall, those crews are scattered and trying to get to everyone, and so, and to the point about safety, they didn't fail, they didn't fail safe, they failed hot. So, just making sure that everything was in a state that we could address it and get people to it took time.
And I think that's the kind of information that it would be great for the citizens to know, just exactly what it took to get their power back on, and I think those are the kind of questions I get, so, and I can answer them, so.
I will say, just for the community's benefit, you know, not to go too far down the wormhole, but our team did a great job of jumping on this quickly. They were asking by, you know, the early hours of the next morning for consent to reach out for mutual aid, and we had three different teams from cities across the state of Missouri who were in Independence later that morning, already helping to our IPL crews restore power. So, I think that response side was good. I think where you'll see us look for opportunities to improve is on the mass communications side.
Very good. Anyone else? Other comments, questions, concerns with that? We'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.